The change order number two in the building down there on Tribe View, when they removed the windows to replace them with energy efficient windows and just better windows, there was absolutely nothing in the, they cut out the concrete blocks, but there was nothing forming a complete, completed area there for them to attach the new windows to, so they had to bring in and do mortar joints around all the windows before they could proceed to replace those windows. That's what this is, the $625 for.
Could move it.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I do have, I do have one statement. How close are we getting to having that building back open?
We will, we have a scheduled walkthrough for the checklist on Monday, the 16th at 9:00 AM. And then we're planning on moving some of our cubicles, they'll, it'll probably take a full day to move our cubicles over there. On Wednesday, they'll be setting up Thursday and Friday, and by the 23rd, we hope to be going there to work in the morning. I, I mean, it's gonna be a lot of moving with all the papers and everything we have to move. So, but definitely by the end of the month, we'll be up in operational. If you want to walk through on Monday morning, please feel free to do so.
What time you go?
Mine.
I was, I was down there yesterday and they were laying carpet, so they're, they were close to being finished.
Yeah, and our IT, our fiber lines and everything we need to hook up yesterday, they started working on that yesterday, so, and that's just within the office. Everything exterior, you're getting it to the building, it's moving pretty good, so it's all coming together pretty nice.
Good. Thanks Patty.
Thanks Patty. Next item is approval residence for the sale property. Set the hearing for the 26th day of June at 10:15. Is there a motion?
Is it the 24th day of June?
Yeah, 24th.
I'm over.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item. Got five minutes. Anyone have anything for the good of the order?
Well, we could remind people that we have our employee appreciation lunch in next Tuesday. Starts at 1:30, 7:30 in the alley.
Yes.
And it'll probably be hot. Always is.
I knew it.
I said it would probably be hot.
Been pretty lucky with jail members, they've been down except for Friday. Friday they spiked.
Looks like June our detention numbers are up, I mean, they have been.
Actually, six of those are getting paid for because they're from BIA in South Dakota.
Larry, can you take one item out of each other?
You bet.
Early.
Oh yeah.
I guess what I wanted to ask about very quickly was the ordinance salute issue.
Yeah.
And see what the impression was of, you know, at least the board members who were able to attend. Our consultant's next step is to prepare his formal report for the board of supervisors and trustees. The impression I came away with from the meeting is that those there that are in favor stated that they prefer the open ditch design option. Where he is at is either to prepare the report using that open ditch option or one of the two tile options, but I, I felt we only have one individual who was in favor of the tile. The majority, I think five or six spoke up and mentioned that they prefer the open ditch design.
They did. I did receive actually two phone calls after and the next day from a couple of landowners, and they indicated that they were wondering why we just wouldn't do maintenance and maybe clean out the ditches and not do any of the plans.
But the, you know, the problem is the ditches that feed the intake are not plugged. Water is flowing down toward that intake even as we speak, and last week we had a couple of pretty good rains, and the water was moving that way. We will check between the railroad and the int, or between the railroad and I think it's the, Larry, it's the back property down there.
Briars?
No, the four briars.
I think it's back.
I think it's back. And see if there's any trees that have grown up into the channel, but the last time we were, looked that over, that was not an issue. There is, I suspect we've got a couple of problems with the 20 inch tile because we were holding waters, as that, that would be maintenance, it would have to be done either way, assuming that the tile stays in place. I, I don't think maintenance is going to solve their problems, and regardless, since our engineer has determined that there is a, it's under capacity, he needs to reflect that in his report. The trustees could then choose to say, well, we're just gonna fix what we've got. It's not feasible to do the other work, and I think that's what you guys determine.
Yeah, the thing is, I thought it was an excellent meeting, but I didn't come away with that with any definitive answer to the ordinance salute. And so, I think he should go ahead and prepare his report, and then the board, I think we want to look at conservation practices, want to look at what the DNRs got to say, and everybody there voiced the opinion they want clean water going into Brown's Lake. That included all the landowners who were there.
Yes.
And I think we have to take a real hard look at that, and after that, then we'll proceed with whatever is recommended by all the various organizations that we'll contact.
All right. He does have an estimate prepared for the rock ripples, the grass ditch between the railroad and the intake, with improving that. He's got roughly an $89,000 estimate for doing that work. Much of that was already included within the original $431,000 estimate, but he specifically tagged those items for you that show that that'll be part of your report. The only question in his mind was which option, if the board's not considering the tile at all, he can prepare with the open ditch.
I don't think the tile was even an option, really.
There was only one who stated enough support for a tile, an approved tile.
Anybody run the numbers on the landowners that were in favor of that? How much property do you have?
I can check and see what that would be. I did not run the percent on that, Larry, but I can provide that information before the hearing.
That's something important.
Because I tried to make note of the names of the landowners who were in support. I want to make sure I killed out your time, but with that direction.
You certainly did, but now.
He can start to work on it, so.
All right. 10:15, the public hearing for the sale, parcel number 513240905 West Fifth Street. This isn't the time to bid, this is the hearing. Is there anyone to be heard?
Would you close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll now sell the property approximately 900 West Fifth, 905 West Fifth Street. Is there anyone here to bid on that property? Yes, sir, would you step up?
Yes, my name is Robert Harper. My home is property next to that facility, and I'd like to be able to purchase that property.
What is your bid?
And, carry. Does that include the cost of services?
I would say yes.
On the front page, it says 393.
The minimum bid is 727.
So, your bid is 727?
727, yes, yes, sir.
Is there anyone else to bid on this property?
Motion to accept.
Seven.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. If you just go, gal right there, I'll take your money. Now, Mr. Mayor.
I guess we might have to take things out of order here since you're running a little bit ahead of schedule. I don't believe that the equipment bids had a set time, that the set time was on the two grade replacement projects. Since they're on top, we'll go ahead and do the motor graders first. The first bid is from Zeigler Caterpillar. We requested bids for both standard six by four drive on the, on the two motor graders. We've also requested six by six all wheel drive option, both with both bidders.
We have our bid tabulation sheet.
They don't have a bid tab for these. We only have two bidders for the motor graders, so we'll have those assembled for you for next week as well. We're bidding two, one will be in District Four at Odo, the other in District Two at Mobile. Net bid price without trade-in is $282,180 for Odo.
Who's this?
This is Caterpillar Zeigler Caterpillar.
Okay.
Trade-in value 56,500. Net bid with trade, 225,680. Then for the Mobile District, the difference would be the trade-in value of 59,500 instead of 56,500. The starting price is the 282,180, 59,500 for the trade, 222,680 is the net, net price for that. With the alternative for the all wheel drive machines, net bid with, without trade is 305,485.
Is that for Odo?
That's for Odo and for Mobile. So, the net bid without trade is 305,485. Trade-in values are the same, 56,500 for Odo, 59,500 for Mobile. That brings the net bid with trade in at 248,985. And the bid for, that's for Odo, for Mobile, 245,985. Net bid without trade for the six by four machine, 258,554. And that's for both Mobile and Odo. Bid, the trade-in bid on the Odo machine is 63,500. On the Mobile machine, 66,500. Net bid with trade-in, 195,054 for Odo, 192,054 for Mobile. Net bid without trade-in on the all wheel drive, 287,426 for both machines, 287,426. Trade-in value at Odo, 63,500. Mobile, 66,500. Net bid with trade, 223,926 for Odo, 220,926 for Mobile.
Do you need to review those, Mark?
I, I would like to review them for compliance with specifications, please.
I'll move her to refer to the engineer for review.
Second.
Discussion. What is the trade-in?
They're both John Deere machines, both are 770CH machines. One is 2002 at Mobile, and it's 2001, as I recall, at Odo.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have quotations for the replacement of our Grado excavator.
Does not. Till the time set.
Which time set, first?
The first one, the.
Pocahontas Avenue.
These I did have bid down school. Should have had them for both of them.
Is there just one?
Yeah. This bridge is on Pocahontas Avenue, southeast of Correctionville. Final engineer's estimate is 605,097. First bid is from Christianson Brothers of Cherokee, Iowa. And their total bid is 571,170 and 50 cents. Next bid is from Dixon Construction of Correctionville, Iowa. Their bid is 497,757 and 65 cents. The final bid is from Graves Construction of Spencer, Iowa. These were advertised both in the Sioux City Journal and in the Iowa UOT Weekly Letting Bulletin. The Weekly Letting Bulletin is now online, so should have had pretty good circulation. Their bid is 580,316 and 12 cents. 580,368, 12.
Motion.
Motion to refer back to the engineer.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Back to review, or?
Yeah, back to review, sir.
Yeah, we, we always want to go through and check their unit prices, make sure there's no errors in bids.
Next one is for, the bridge on 188 Sixth Street.
That's, that's correct. This is H109, this is about three and a half miles south of Mobile. First bid is from Christianson Brothers of Cherokee. Our estimate on this project was 638,669,75. Prior bridge was 90 foot by 30 foot continuous concrete slab. This is a 100 foot by 30 foot continuous concrete slab. Bid from Christianson Brothers is 570,579 and 50 cents. 570,579, 50. Next bid is from Dixon Construction of Correctionville. Total bid on this project is 508,87 dollars and 40 cents. Total bid is 599,950 and 35 cents.
Motion to back to the engineer for proposal.
Second.
All those in favor?
I was a hard statement.
Aye. Motion carries. We got some excellent bids there.
We did. Compared to the ones we took last month, these were very good prices. This time we're a week ahead of DOT letting, maybe that helped. DOT letting on Brownson Bridge will be next week. But yes, these were, these were very good prices. These are the first two bridges funded with your capital projects levy, so these will be out of that 1.3 million per year. I guess we could go now on the rest of the equipment. First quote is from Road Machinery and Supplies of Sioux City.
On the excavator.
This hydraulic excavator, yes.
I'm sorry, who did you say from, who?
Pardon me, oh, this is Road Machinery and Supplies Company. And they submitted a no bid. There's only two manufacturers of this type of machine in the country now. Used to be four. Gradually, I think, machine demand has gone down.
Okay, wait a minute. You just have one bid there?
Yes.
No, he had two, but one guy chose.
Submitted a no bid. We sent it out to all of the suppliers, we sent it to the factory, or Badger, which is the only other one in the country we know of that's made.
Mr. Jennings?
That's the only person who bid, that's the only person who bid.
Okay, let's go ahead and open it.
Who's this next person?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is Mid Country Machinery of Sargent, Ohio. This is for Grado XL4100, series four. This replaces our current XL4100. Total bid without trade is 376,600. Trade-in for the machine, currently own, 25,000. Net bid with trade, 351,600. These are expensive pieces of machinery, it was basically an excavator on a truck that will run roads.
Think you're getting a good deal back for a trade-in?
Our machine is, I want to say, years old.
Oh, okay.
Unfortunately, it hasn't. Our, our effects in that machine were, the dealer is aware of them.
Your motion to refer is?
Back to the engineer.
Or just to accept, do you need to refer to you just?
I would like to go ahead and review it.
Okay.
And I've already discussed with the dealer some of the non-compliance issues, because the spec has changed quite a bit since, since we last bid some of those.
I motion that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
We've come to the part of the agenda, we're hearing if any individual in the group wishes to make a presentation. Does any member of the board have anything?
I get nothing.
Anything from the public?
Motion to adjourn.
Will adjourn to sign the.
Canvas.
Thank you.
You're the only one left.
Hi.
Yes, sir.
It's been an experience. But I do want to wish you all the luck in all.
Thank you very much, and I hope that's what they're trying to do.
Thank you.
When do, when do actual bids?
Larry, I would, you tell you, the only requirement is that there's a proper notice given, proper notice given, if only one, it doesn't mean you have consent, if you can take it in.
That was your first, that's going with that, is you don't have, you don't accept it, we're gonna.
You never have to accept. We'll be in process.
Oh, give them the process.
Maybe you should push it a bit more. Oh, geez. So, did you purchase? No, yeah, my wife and I have a house there. Transitioning with her. She got a job too.
Oh, she's, she's in the room?
That's the job side, I know, now I'm just having a thousand. I came here, so. What was your question, sir? And I would just wanted to ask that question. They will, they'll find. Yeah, it's exciting, I've actually worked on the state government, given me, you know, departments or commissioners you've worked on. From what I can tell, that department kind of stick together and everybody works, everybody likes what they do, so.
Do you have to, do you have to have a budget every year? I just wondered.
Yeah.
They turn to get beat up. Do you really need that, James?
He has to buy a budget for him, he's about.
Yeah, you're, yeah. No, we work with the department heads, we help develop their budget, and we present the ideas, and our ideas to the governor, and the governors will make the decision on what they want for something.
You do well at that, thinking about, yeah. You've been scrutinizing the decisions for a while.
Check in, little kid. Gotta touch it.
Good luck, Ron, now.
It's kind of a cool rock.
Is it Friday? Hopefully it'll be back.
Not if you're very late, there's, there's a call.
I never put a budget. What they're wanting, now people.
Work for the state?
Her wife got a job down there? Yes, she actually got a job in the city, so.
Cool.
Yes, two of them, four months now and three years.
House there, no school, right?
Yeah, that's awesome. Still moving.
Well, that's awesome, I read that, and I was like, oh, good.
One pack, yes, I see that.
So, what, you guys found a new directory, you gotta start now?
They are on the search process. We'll see how.
Awesome.
What, am I not doing a very good job here, I'm saying?
Not at all.
I've got a glycogen.
No, I'm not here to, I couldn't pass out.
I'm not good, right?
Get to actually work on the state.
Am I not doing a very good job here, I'm saying? I've got a glycogen.
Get to actually work on the state.
Yeah, so I have to just reply for that, or?
I only go big words.
And they move fast. I know people who've got a high rate of sitting and took them like eight months.
Did I hear you correctly that you're pulling Lucky Guy? Are you a certain?
My wife is.
I'm not gonna state France, although Iowa plays Nebraska, I will hold Nebraska's hand, so.